Let's go ahead and begin with a word of prayer, and then we'll jump into our lesson this evening. And we'll have, we'll see how it go, we'll go through tonight. Next week, we will have a lesson next week. And depending on how it goes, we'll determine whether we can get beyond that. I know that it's only scheduled for one more after this week, but it's actually, there's actually two in the whole series. So we'll see if you want to do that other one or not, or if you want to finish next week, whichever way you want to do it. But some of it will determine on how much discussion and stuff you want to participate in with it. So let's go ahead and begin with a word of prayer. Let's look to the Lord in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you again for your love. We thank you for the opportunity to study your word. We thank you for godly individuals that you have given, that right, that help us to understand and be able to apply your truth to our lives from your word. We pray, Lord, that you would fill us with a knowledge of your will and spiritual understanding as we look at your word this evening, as we understand the truths of Ephesians, chapter six, as they apply to our lives in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We are on lesson number six, or session number six. And it really is, it ended in the, in the same chapter where we were last week in chapter 10, right on where it says strengthening faith is really where it, where we ended up last week. And we're dealing with the whole idea of taking up the shield of faith. What does it mean to take up the shield of faith? So in your handouts, it would be page three on your handout, where we have already gone down through taking up the shield of faith and what that means. It's not dealing with, I just, I just highlight once again, remember that this is not dealing with saving faith. This is dealing with our absolute confidence in God, in the promises that he has made, in his power and program for our life. So that when we read the word of God, we're able to understand it, apply it, we're able to walk through and say, I believe God's word is truth on this area of our life. So important to understand that. So as we come down through it, remember that the devil has those fiery darts, those missiles that he wants to fire at you that would make you question what God has done for us. Make, uh, let's keep it down over there, okay? If you two, if you two are gonna keep acting up, we're gonna have to separate you, okay? So as we look at it, remember that as you think this through, it is the deception that needs to be immediately met by the shield of faith. That shield of faith is that which is put on the ground, and you duck behind it. And it quenches, the very design of it was to quench those darts, those missiles that were coming from the enemy. And the same is true when it comes to faith in the word of God. Faith, that present faith in the Lord. Do you believe God for your life today? Do you believe that you can trust him with what he says about what you should do? Look at page 143 in your book. Page 143, a quote by A.W. Tozer says this. He says, "The root of the word goodness used so often to describe God is a word that means generosity." As Tozer says, "God takes holy pleasure in the happiness of his children." Do you know, and do you believe, and are you committed to the truth that God is for you? He is for you. He's not against you. He is for you. And so in the circumstances of life, when those seeds of doubt would be thrown at us in our thinking, and we would question the goodness of God right away, we need to challenge that with the shield of faith, recognizing that God is for us. So that you can trust in, in your lesson sheet there, number one, towards the bottom of page three, you need to be trusting in God's character. Trusting in God's character. You can trust God's character. You can trust who he is. God has my best in mind. He has your best interest in mind. He has my best interest in mind. And everything that he does is for my eternal good. Even though at the moment, I may not fully be able to comprehend it or understand it, what he is doing and what he is up to in my life is for my good. And the things that he is up to in your life are for your good always. And it's hard to understand that sometimes. But we need to recognize that we can trust his character. Secondly, we need to trust in God's promises and word. He will accomplish what concerns me. He'll accomplish what concerns me. Somebody read for me Philippians, chapter one, and verse six. Somebody read Philippians, chapter one, verse six. Somebody grab Romans eight, 28 and 29. And if you're gonna read, grab a mic that is sitting right there by Chris somewhere. Okay? Go ahead and hand that mic back to, so we can have that. Go ahead and turn that back there, flip it on. And then we'll go ahead and read. You got the Philippians one?
Yes.
Go ahead and read Philippians one, six.
Being confident of this very thing, that he who has begun a good work in you will complete it until the day of Jesus Christ.
Do you believe that? See, do I believe that he who has begun a good work in me is going to complete that? Because there will be seeds of doubt that will question. There will be seeds of doubt that the devil will want to bring in that will make me question whether God really has my best interest at stake. Somebody read for me Romans eight, 28 to 29. Romans eight, 28 to 29.
And we know that in all things, God's works for the good of those who love him, who has been called according to his purpose.
Okay. When you, keep going, read verse, keep going.
For those God, for those God foreknown, he also predicts to be perdested, confronted to those image of his son, that his might be the first born amongst many brothers and sisters.
Okay, so that his goal in each of our lives is to conform each one of us to the image of Jesus Christ. He predetermined that everything would work together for good. I have shared this before, but it's the, just like Chip shares things in the book from his own personal life, is the only thing I know, is the, my personal life experience. And I can remember the day that surgeon walked in and said that the cancer had reoccurred in Candy's body. And I came that day, and I sat right here in the front. And I looked up at the front, and I said, I either have to believe Romans eight, 28, or I've gotta quit preaching, one or the other. And I wrestled with it. God, what are you up to? How is this going to work out for my good? How is this gonna work out for the good of this community of believers? How is this gonna work out? But the reality is, God is at work in us, both to will and to do according to his good pleasure. And I may not always see how all of that is going to work out, but I can trust him. And when the devil would give those seeds of doubt, it is then that you need to immediately confront that with a shield of faith and say, I know that God is at work for me, and that he is conforming me to the image of Jesus Christ. And by the way, there is no other way he could do it. He's too wise to be mistaken. There's no other way to do it. If there was another way to do it, that would be easier, and that would be better for me than he would do that. But the reality is, he knows exactly what it takes in each of our lives to conform us to the image of Jesus Christ. Trust in God's promises and word. Somebody read Second Peter one, two through four. Second Peter one, two through four. All right, BJ, Second Peter, chapter one, verses two, three, and four. Hold the mic right up close, there you go.
Grace and peace be yours in abundance through the knowledge of God and of Jesus our Lord, confirming one's calling and election. His divine power has given us everything we need for our godly life through our knowledge of him who called us by his own glory and goodness. Through these he has given us his very great and precious promises, so that through them you may participate in the divine nature, having escaped the corruption in the world caused by evil desires.
Okay, so that God has given me everything that I need for life and godliness. He's provided everything. These precious and magnificent promises, he has given to us so that we grab a hold of them. So that in the midst of the struggles of life and where we are, we grab a hold of those promises regardless of what is being spoken into our thought business. Regardless of that, we need to do that. When you look at number three, trusting in God's program and timing. Trusting in God's program and timing. His ways are not always easiest, but are always best. You know, we may look at it and say, oh, there's gotta be an easier way. If there was, he'd have us take it. But his ways, it is always in our best interest to follow God's design and plan for our life, always. Why? Because he has our best interest at stake. When you go over to page 144 in the book, the last paragraph above personal application, it says, "God gives us his views on numerous issues, so you don't need to let the enemy's missiles drive you beyond God's boundaries. You claim his promise, hold it up in faith against a specific missile coming at you. Whatever it is that is causing you to faint, so to speak, at that moment, whatever it is that would be causing you to doubt, you need to trust God's program right at that moment. We need to recognize that his timing, his program is always in our best interest, even though we may not understand it. We also need to recognize that there's nothing that comes into our life that God doesn't already know would be there, and there's no testing that take, that's come to you, but that he will not also make a way to escape based on his way out. Read for me First Corinthians 10, 13. First Corinthians 10, 13. Just pass that mic to somebody else that wants to read in, or somebody on Zoom can read. Huh?
I just don't have it on up there.
They can't see us, but we can see them.
Yep, First Corinthians 10, 13. Go ahead, you got the mic? Go ahead and grab that mic real quick.
No temptation has overtaken you except what is commanded mankind, and God is faithful. He will not let you be tempted beyond what you can bear. But when you are tempted, he will also provide a way out so that you may endure it.
Okay, he always gives us a way out so that we can endure it. Now, the key is, we have to seek his what? His way. We have to seek his way out, not our own way. Important to, to recognize that. For some reason, we'll see if it, there we go. Okay. As you look at this, important to recognize that there's no temptation. None, nothing that Satan is gonna bring against you is going to be something that you cannot handle because of God. In the book, on page 145, on page 145, it says, "Think of a flaming dart that has pierced your life in the past. Which of God's promises could have spared you from the wound you received?" See, there are promises that God has given us that many times, if we would have submitted to them, it could have spared us from maybe a wound that we took if we would have had the shield of faith planted in front of us. If we were to place that in front of us. Anybody wanna offer one up on that one? If not, why is it hard? Down another question, two, there it says, "Why is it hard to believe God's promises? And what ways do we try to place conditions on them or water them down? Why is it hard to believe God's promises?" Huh? Okay, there are people that are speaking into my thought business that are telling me different. So that's one of the reasons why it's hard to believe. Because they're talking to you in real time, aren't they? And they're saying, no, I see what you're facing. I see what you're going through, and this is what you need to do. Or this is what you need to say. And yet, we need to go back and say, what does God say? What are his promises? Anything else?
Going back to the first question?
Yep.
Which of God's promises could have spared me from a wound I received? I'm gonna say, at some point or another in my life, all of God's promises.
Okay.
Could have spared me from a whole lot of stuff.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, financial, relationship, any, even work. His promises, if I would have had them in front of me, could have spared me from a lot.
Yep. Yep. And I think that if we're honest, and we search out in our own lives, that would be the case for a lot of us, wouldn't it? That'd be, that would be our case, that we recognize that none of us are beyond something that we have done, or something that has happened to us, that we say, if I would have just followed what God said, then this would not have happened. I could have been spared from this. And after all, that's why we try to, to teach young people, isn't it? We're trying to teach them so that they don't have to go through those same learning lessons, that they can recognize if they listen to somebody. Now, let's face it, there are some people that won't learn unless they go through that school of hard knocks. But a lot easier way to learn is by having somebody else experience that, and you learn that, oh, I can watch them, and it didn't turn out well. So I'm going to believe God's promises. I'm going to trust God's promises. Anybody else on those?
I hate learning the hard way.
Yeah, Jerry, Jerry Koenig said, "I hate learning the hard way." Yeah, that, that is true, isn't it? Let me ask another one. What are three specific situations to which you need to apply faith today? This is where, when you go through this book, and you read the word of God, and we're thinking it through, we need to move beyond the abstract to the concrete. We need to bring it into our personal life today and say, how can this work for me? What promises of God would be appropriate to trust in the situation that I'm facing right now in my life? What can I do? What could I walk with God? What can I trust God in right now in my situation of life? They give you in the left, in the book here, he gives you some areas of temptation on page 145, and some promises. These are just a few. If you're struggling in a specific area, and you want God's promises on them, you can either Google it or call me, okay? One or the other. You'd be surprised that when you do, that even though it is not a biblical source per se, there is a lot of good helps that you can come up with. And so encourage you to do that. We'll talk some more about that as we go through. But we need to make sure it's essential to trust in God's character and in his program and timing as soon as the missile is fired at you. As soon as that dart is coming at you, do not put it off. Do not try to do it in your own strength. You need to immediately surrender to what God says. His promises, his program, and what he has for you in relation to his character as you study that out. Well, let's, let's move forward then from the shield of faith to the next one. And page four in your notes, and take the helmet of salvation. Take the helmet of salvation. Now, remember, the spiritual battle, the loss of victory is always in the thought world. So when you're thinking of spiritual battle, the spiritual battle always is in our thought business. And then from there, it moves out of my thought business into my speech, my actions, my emotions. It comes first, though, in my thought business. So that's where the battle is won and lost, is in my thought business. So as you think this through, take the helmet of salvation. Focus here is on present deliverance. When we're thinking of this salvation here, this is not dealing primarily with our eternal destiny. We already know that that is secure. So we rest in confidence in that. We rest in confidence in the fact that our eternal destiny is secure. But at the same time, we focus on present deliverance from sin. That is also salvation, is it not? That, whenever you're talking about salvation, you're speaking of deliverance. That's what its focus is. We have been delivered from the penalty of sin. We are being delivered from the power of indwelling sin. And one day, we'll be delivered from the very presence of sin. What a glorious day that will be. As we look at it today, though, for this lesson, we are taking the helmet of salvation, and it is the certainty of deliverance from sin and the protection of our minds in the battle. So it is the protection of my mind that I do not have to let the little seeds of doubt or those things that come against me, that are brought against me from the demonic world or my own flesh, I do not have to let those spin in my thought business. What the Bible would call my heart. I do not have to let them spin there. Important to recognize that, so that it's not something you can do. Look at page 149 with me. Look at page 149 in your book. On page 149, it says, the middle of the top, the second paragraph, "The helmet of salvation, then, is the certainty of deliverance from sin and the protection of our minds in battle." Here's the key. "The helmet of salvation may be seen as the ability to reason logically and wisely from a biblical worldview, no matter how that worldview comes under attack." Don't miss that. It is that I now know, by study of the word of God, by what God says, I now have the correct lenses to be able to see purpose and meaning in my world. Without the lens of Scripture, without looking through the lens of Scripture, my view of what is important and significant and meaningful in the world is going to be distorted. And what even brings me peace and hope and comfort is going to be distorted. So when you look at it, it's important to understand that that is the helmet of salvation, the helmet of deliverance. It's not something you can do, but receive. It is something that you allow God to do in your mind. It is something that you allow. You live in confidence that God is accomplishing victory in us today. You have to live in that. That is the helmet of salvation when you live in light of that truth. As you think that through, don't miss the middle of the page on page 149. Middle of the page says, "Do not allow yourself to be conformed." We're looking at Romans 12, two. Just flip in your Bible to Romans 12, two, so that you don't miss this. Romans, chapter 12, verse two. Remember verse one? The apostle Paul challenges us in verse one, that we're going to yield our bodies as a living sacrifice, holy and acceptable unto God, and do not be conformed, verse two. In other words, don't be pressed into the mold. It's kind of like the idea of Jell-O. You all have done that, okay? You all know that. You pour the Jell-O into the mold, and it conforms to what? Whatever mold you put it into. And unfortunately, too often, even as Christians, we are in the world, and we get pressed into the mold of what? The world. Don't be pressed into the mold of the world. Don't be conformed to this world. But notice in the book here, it reminds us on the middle of the page, "Do not allow yourself to be conformed, but allow yourself to be transformed." Notice, we allow it and participate in it. But God is the one who actively does it in us. In other words, we participate in it, but God is the one who actively does that in our life. He is the one who transforms us. It's the power of the Spirit of God working in our life that does that. And though it is always with our cooperation, but it's his work. It's his work, but he expects us to cooperate with him in that. He's not gonna force you to participate. He's not gonna make you participate. But when we don't participate, then we do not have the helmet of salvation that is going to guard the most important part of our body. If I take a direct hit there, I'm in trouble. So because of that, it is most important. Somebody quote, somebody read for me Proverbs 4, 23. Proverbs 4, 23, somebody read that. Uh, you can, you can tell she's cheating back there 'cause she's got a phone. So she's just, she's just turning, she's turning it out really, really fast, isn't she? Okay, you got there. Go ahead, go ahead, read Proverbs 4, 23. Make sure you hold the mic right up next to you there. Proverbs 4, 23.
Above all helps guard your heart, for everything you do flows from it.
Okay, guard your heart. Guard your thought business. That's what the heart is. When you think of the heart, you'll hear me say it over and over again, the heart is the center of my creative thinking. The Bible says, "As a man thinketh in his heart, so is he. Out of the abundance of the heart the mouth speaks." My emotions come out of my heart. My speech comes out of my heart. My actions come out of my heart. That's why it's so critical that we guard our what? The very vitality and energy of life comes from my thought business. That's why the helmet of salvation is so critical. The helmet of salvation is critical. Now, on the handout that I gave you, it says, how? How? How are we going to make sure that we have the helmet of salvation? The focus is on God's renewing of the believer's mind. And the only way, here's how it works. If you just look at me here a moment, I'm going to do this. What you do, let's say this is my mind, okay? This is my mind. Everything has been put in there from the time I was a child. The mind is the sorter, the store, the gatherer of information. It's been gathering information since I was born. Now, from that, my heart becomes creative. My thought business takes what is in my mind and becomes creative with it, thinks about it. So if, kind of like with a computer, if you put garbage in, what do you expect out? Okay. Now, if I do that in my mind, then I can expect the same thing out because that's what my heart is being creative with. So when I guard it, that means I'm going to be careful what I'm putting in my mind so that my heart will be thinking about what is right. So when you look at this and it talks about the focus is God's renewing of the believer's mind, 2 Corinthians 10:5 reminds us that the battle is for the mind. That's why the devil wants to paralyze you by putting the wrong information in your mind so that then you'll think about it. You'll dwell on it. The only way you combat that is with putting God's Word in your mind. God's promises, God's truth has to go in there. And important to, to understand that, that that is how it is going to work. We are to take every thought captive to the obedience of Christ. That's what it says there in 2 Corinthians 10:5. Take every thought captive to the obedience of Christ. You do not have to let your thoughts just run wild. As a matter of fact, if you do, then you're going to find that that is where the playground of the devil is, and in doing that, it will pull you down. We need to focus on truth. So how are we going to do that? Look at in the handout that I gave you, page 4, middle of the page, practically, prayer. I need to be in constant communication with God. I need to be talking with Him as I go through my day. Worship, celebrating who God is. That's what worship is. Worship is attributing worth to God. God, what you say is more important than what I think. And then music. For the most part, we are musical beings, and so what we listen to is going to affect what we think, whether we like it or not. You know, we always joke, you know what you get when you play country and western backwards? You get your wife back, your dog back, your house back, your car back, because you lose it off, you play it forward, okay? I mean, the reality is that we need to be listening to what is truth and we need to be putting what is good and sound in our mind so my heart can be creative with it. Important to do that. Also Scripture, memorizing Scripture. One of the things that I encouraged you to do, and if you haven't done it yet, it's not too late, grab the cards. If you don't have the money with you today, just go ahead and get them anyway. The cards that are out on the back table that go along with the lessons. Those cards are there so that there is truth on the front of it that you read, you flip it over, and there's verses to memorize. That is critical that we are memorizing God's Word. Because it's when I memorize God's Word that then at the moment of attack, I am able at the moment of attack to confront with God's Word. Let's go to Matthew chapter 4. Turn your Bible to Matthew chapter 4. This will take us right into the next, into the next one, the sword of the Spirit. The sword of the Spirit. Take the sword of the Spirit. I want to make sure I leave enough time for discussion at the end, so run with me here as we go through this, the battle for the mind. And remember that Christians who are not filling their minds with Scripture are like warriors going out to battle without a helmet. When you look at, while you're looking at Matthew chapter 4, in, on page 153, middle of the page, middle of the paragraph, it says, "From a human perspective, the worst that can happen to someone who is a believer is death, and the moment you die, you're with Jesus."
Amen.
Oh well, you know, could you imagine having been?
Come get me now.
Could you, could you imagine having been the, with the apostle Paul as a jailer or with chained to the apostle Paul? And they said, "We're going to kill you. No problem, I'll see Jesus. We're going to beat you. Oh, I count it a privilege to suffer for Jesus." You know, everything you did, he looked at it as a way to praise God. I mean, can you imagine that you're like, "What is wrong with this guy?" Because he recognized, "For me to live is Christ and to die is gain." Wow, what a new way, what a new perspective on life, isn't it? To look at it that way, to recognize, "God has me here for a purpose today, and when He's done with me, then I get to go see Him." It's not that I take it out too soon, it's that when He's done, I had the teens ask me, "Aren't you afraid of dying?" I said, "No, but I'm not real crazy about maybe how it might happen." You know, I'm not afraid of death, but I'm not sure about the process of it, okay? As you think of it, we need to understand what's so bad about being with Jesus. Being with Jesus in a perfect environment forever and ever with all of your longings and desires fulfilled in Him. Ultimate hope puts everything else in the perspective of eternity. That's the helmet of salvation. That's the helmet of salvation. It puts everything in that perspective of the ultimate deliverance, and so today I can trust Him for my deliverance today. I can believe in the helmet of salvation. When you look at, look at that, if, says, he was talking about how that God had, had worked with him, and it says, "If I fell flat on my face and failed," bottom of the page 153, it would be ultimate. Salvation guarantees it. It wouldn't be ultimate. So what if what you are trying to accomplish today in life fails? That's not the end of it. That's, that's not the end of life. He says, "That helmet protects me from all my dread of failure and loss, even when the threats come from the destructive plans of a powerful enemy." Important to keep that in perspective. What did Jesus do? Remember, we've got to put it in our thought business. Matthew chapter 4, when you look in Matthew chapter 4, beginning at verse 1 and walking down through verse 11. What was it? What's the key phrase there that is given repeatedly as he is faced with temptation in his life?
It is written.
It is written. It is written. You know, we forget this sometimes because we usually blow it off like something like this. Well, yeah, he could do that because he was God manifest in the flesh. Oh, you forgot the very last part of that. He had to grow in wisdom and knowledge like every other human being. So when he quoted that Scripture, he quoted it because as a youth and as a young man, he had memorized it. That's why. He had to learn it just like you and I have to learn. Important to keep that in perspective, that when he quotes the Word of God, it's because he had memorized the Word of God. If Jesus Christ had to memorize the Word of God, how much more important for what? For us to memorize the Word of God. You say, "I can't memorize." Well, you take a three by five card, you write a verse on it, and you start reading it out loud repeatedly, over and over and over again. It doesn't matter if it takes a week or two weeks or a month, you still can what? Memorize the Word of God. So that you are placing it at the center of your thinking. As we come to page 155, before we, before we go into the sword of the Spirit, why is God so concerned about your mind and why is Satan so concerned about it?
Spiritual battle for our minds and our souls.
Okay, spiritual battle is done there. Anybody else?
He wants control.
He wants control. He knows that if he can control what you're thinking, he also can control your emotions and your actions and your speech. That's why. One of the other questions that he has there says, "Can you identify any patterns that undermine your faith and confidence in God's ability to deliver? Can you identify any patterns that undermine your faith and confidence in God's ability to deliver?" You need to think this through in your own life. You need to weigh it out. And then you need to make sure that you find verses that will counter that. Down at the bottom, two questions. What game plan do you need to put into practice in order to fill your mind with truth? There needs to be an action plan. It needs to be that you are going to say, in action words, "This is what I am going to do," and then you make a plan to what?
Do it.
To do it. Don't leave it for, "I hope so," or "Maybe someday." No, make sure that you come up with a game plan, share it with somebody else. So that in sharing it with somebody else, it also helps to give some accountability. So that then you're able to walk through it. What do you think your life would look like if you considered yourself already dead and lived only for God and His glory? Anybody want to?
Be pretty awesome.
Be pretty awesome.
Bulletproof.
Bulletproof. It would. He has given us everything that pertains to life and godliness, right? So there's no excuse. If I sin, it's because I choose to what? What'd you say, Mary?
I said, "No more pain, no more suffering, just glorifying Him."
Okay, just glorifying Him. Heather?
No worry.
No worry. So it would stop the worry. Why? Because I know that my life is in Him and everything I do is in Him. Think of how that could radically change our lives if we just took the worry factor out.
We would have total joy.
There would be joy. We could have that joy that He desires for us to have if we would do that, for sure. Important to recognize that these are not just simply abstract truths for us to sit around and chat about, but that it's concrete things that we need to what? We need to do. We need to get into it, we need to do it, we need to live that out so that it can change our lives, so that we can be what God desires for us to be. Go on to chapter 12 in your book, and this will take us down the sheet to, on page 4, to the sword of the Spirit. And take the sword of the Spirit. Ephesians chapter 6 and verse 17 reminds us, "Take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the Spirit, which is the Word of God." When you look at it, it tells us right there the text, there's no wondering what the sword of the Spirit is. The sword of the Spirit on page 158, bottom of the page is where he talks about it, starts it. It is the Word of God. Now, this is not Lagos that you see, for instance, back in John chapter 1 and verse 1, when it says, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God." That's in relation to a being, that's in relation to Jesus Christ. This is Rema, which is spoken word, or the words given to us by the Spirit of God. So these are God's words, God's truth. As we've already mentioned, Jesus models it for us. The truth of God's Word quoted and applied to specific lie or deception of the enemy. That's what it's dealing with when we talk about the sword of the Spirit, which is the Word of truth here. As you look, you see that we have to take every thought captive to the obedience of Christ. He gives us two important truths. Number one, if this is going to take place, page 159, middle of the page, the fact that the Word of God is a sword of the Spirit teaches us two important truths. Number one, you have to be in vital relationship with the Holy Spirit. If the Word of God, which is Hebrews chapter 4, verse 12, "Is alive and active and powerful and sharper than a two-edged sword, and it pierces to the dividing asunder of soul and spirit, and is a discerner of the thoughts and intents of my heart," as it says, if that's the case, that's what the Spirit of God uses. That's the sword of the Spirit that is being used. It's the Word, the spoken Word of God, and the Holy Spirit is what makes it alive and active in my life. So first of all, I need to make sure that in my life, that I have a vital relationship with the Spirit. Secondly, the second truth. I mean, I mean, just first of all, I'm getting ahead. On page 159, right before the second truth, just above it, the bottom of the page, "The degree to which your life is filled with the Spirit of God and fits within the kingdom of God is the degree to which your swordplay will be effective." Important to grab that. The degree to which your life is filled with the Spirit of God. That's what will make the sword wielding effective. So that Ephesians chapter 5 and verse 18. Ephesians chapter 5 and verse 18 says, "We're not to be filled or we're not to be under the control of a substance, but we're to be filled with the Spirit of God." If someone is, if somebody drank too much alcohol, somebody says they're under the what? Under the influence. It is the alcohol. Sometimes you'll even hear something, "Oh, that's the alcohol talking. That's the beer talking." Okay? Well, rather than being under the control of any substance, Ephesians 5:18 says, "Which is dissipation or harmful aversion," he says, "Be filled with the Holy Spirit." In other words, be controlled by what? Be controlled by the Holy Spirit. And when I'm controlled by the Holy Spirit, it is then that I'm able to wield the sword of the Spirit, which is the Word of God. When He is in control and He is the one calling the shots in my life.
Pastor, a question for you. Let's take our country. When the gospel was started and spread in this country, there were many people that turned to the Lord, churches were established. And in this very same time that that happened, we had enslaved people and used the Bible as some kind of justification for it, the Old Testament. And even Jesus said, "You know, whatsoever you would have men do to you, do even so to them, for this is the law of prophets." And yet, even in my lifetime, in Southern Baptist, they, they apologized just about five years ago that they took that stand. And here you were having churches in our country with the sword of the Spirit, the Word of God preached, and yet they could never get, they didn't get that right. You had truth on one side, and in the same token, you had?
Well, I think that it's a, I don't think that it was necessarily truth on one side because while there may be individuals who will be in heaven someday, they certainly couldn't have been following the truth. they certainly couldn't have been following the truth. In other words, they were taking parts of the truth and taking parts of the truth to make it fit their agenda. But they could not be taking the whole of the Word of God. Otherwise, that would have never been a part of our country. So, I think that I would always challenge and say that while maybe they claim to be a follower of Jesus Christ, they were not genuinely submitting to the leading of the Holy Spirit. Because the leading of the Holy Spirit will never lead you in a way that violates biblical truth.
I agree with that.
And what they were doing violated biblical truth. So they were not being led by the Holy Spirit. They were not spirit-filled individuals. You can't be. And then turn around and violate at the level that it was violated. So I would say that they, they could be a Christian, but they could not be a, what we're talking about here, a genuine spirit-filled Christian who is in their life yielding to the ministry of the Spirit of God and the Sword of the Spirit. They had allowed the devil to speak into their thinking what they wanted, what they felt, what they rationalized in their own hearts, in their own thinking. And had become hardened and indifferent to the truth of the Word of God. Otherwise, the Spirit of God would have impacted their life as it did many. I'm not saying it never did any, but it did impact many, and they turned from that. And that's why even years later, you see some in these different groups that have apologized and offered that apology. But I would say that they were not doing what I just mentioned from Ephesians, Chapter 5, and verse 18. Otherwise, they would have had to have been Galatians, Chapter 5, "If you submit to the Spirit of God in your life, then the evidence of that will be in the fruit of the Spirit." And that will also then deal with the lust of the flesh. It will deal with the pride of life. It will deal with all of that. And it would have dealt with anger, bitterness, resentment, murder, all of that. So they were not walking in the Spirit. Couldn't be. Why? Because when you walk in the Spirit, the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, gentleness, meekness, temperance, faith. Oh, you might be able to say, "I have faith in God, in the existence of God, and even know that Jesus Christ died on the cross for your sins. And even have prayed and accepted Jesus Christ's payment for your sin, without being filled by the Spirit of God." That's how I would look at that. Okay? As you look here, the application Jesus models for us, what we already talked about, when you look at the Sword of the Spirit in Matthew 4. He shows us how to use the Sword of the Spirit. And when you look at Psalm 119:105, what does Psalm 119:105 say? What's that?
A lamp to our feet and a light to our path.
Okay, God's Word is a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. It's critical to understand, "That's what guides my thinking. That's what guides my direction." It needs to be not based on what people say. It needs to be based on, "Thus saith the Lord." That's what needs to guide my thought business. When you look at Psalm 19, verse 9, and Psalm 19, verse 11, what do they say? "Your word what? How can a young man cleanse his way? By taking heed thereto according to the Scriptures. Your word I have hid in my heart, that I might not sin against you." The way that we keep from sin in our life is as we put God's Word in our thought business. We put it in our mind, which my heart becomes creative with and thinks about. If I'm not doing that, then I'm going to be defective when it comes to being able to wield the sword. Some practical considerations. Last of the notes here on that, it says, "It is both a defensive and an offensive weapon." Quickly, live it out then. Last page, page 5 of your notes. Live it out. How to engage the enemy in spiritual warfare, the summary of it. The prerequisite is a healthy spiritual life. You have to be walking in the Spirit. You have to have a healthy spiritual life. Secondly, understand your position in Christ. Know that you are seated in heavenly places with Christ Jesus. Know that you are a child of the King. Live like a child of the King. You could even use that, that I've always used with my own kids. Use it with your spouse, use it with family members. They're going out the door, as they're going out the door to go to work, say, "Remember whose kids you are." Okay? You're a child of the King. Live like a child of the King. Think like a child of the King. Discern when demonic influence may be the cause. Not everything is of the devil or demonic, but we need to discern when it is. Number four, claim God's promises out loud. Claim God's promises out loud. Things like, "Greater is he that is in the world, greater is he that's in me than he that's in the world." Promises that are given to us in 1 John 4:4, 1 John 5:4 and 5. Claim the promises that are given there. Take your authority and position in Christ to command demonic forces to cease their activity and depart. In the lesson, some questions that maybe can help us to think about this just a little bit. Let me just ask a couple of questions. I know we're up against the clock here, but I want you to think about this. "When the fiery darts of doubt and deception are aimed at you, which do you find the most challenging? Trust in God's character? Trust in God's promises and His Word? Or trust in God's program and His timing?" You need to think through that. You need, "What ones do I wrestle with the most? What is the most difficult?" And for one person, it may be different than for somebody else.
Where would giving up control come in play on that?
Where does giving up control come into? That's right at the very, right at the very top of it. As you think that that has to be the starting point. I have to first of all, remember, James reminds us, Peter reminds us, that first of all, I have to submit to God, resist the devil, and he will flee from you. So submission to God is paramount to having any spiritual victory whatsoever. So that it comes to yielding my rights to God. It comes back to remembering that I have been bought with a price. Therefore, I ought to glorify God in my body and spirit, which are His. He owns me. He bought me. He redeemed me. Okay? Another one. "The helmet of salvation is the certainty of deliverance from sin and the protection of your mind in battle." How do you protect or renew your mind? What are you going to do to protect or renew your mind?
Read in prayer. Read your Bible in prayer.
Prayer. Read the Word of God. Listen to the Word of God.
We went to a friend's house, and in every room of her house, she has pictures up that have Scripture. So anywhere that she went in her...
Okay, so wherever you go, there were pictures that have Scripture. So it's constantly in your face. So that it's there in front of you, just a real easy way to do that and constantly be able to remember, to focus on that. Memory, memorizing. Important to not only memorize, but then to meditate. To think deeply about. The word there in Psalm, and you've heard me say it before, but in Psalm, Chapter 1, beginning in verse 1 and following, when it says that he meditated on God's Word, day and night, it's that he ruminated. It's that which a ruminant animal does. When a cow, a ruminant animal chews its cud, it gets all of the nutrients it can out of the grass. Then it swallows it. Goes into its stomach, the first chamber. Then it regurgitates it, brings it back up again, and chews it some more, to get more out of it. That is what the word is when it talks about meditating on God's Word. It is literally from the root word in the Hebrew there of ruminant. So that we are chewing it over. Constantly thinking it over. Important to recognize that that's where the battle can be won, in the transformation of our mind. So, number three here. What are specific ways that you are going to guard your mind from evil? What are specific ways that you're gonna guard your mind from evil? Because let's face it, in our world today, there is an attack against the mind. There is an attack against biblical truth. And so you're going to have to, you can't go out of the world. Paul talks about that, doesn't he? He says, "Not that you go out of the world, you're in the world, but you don't have to be of the world." So what am I gonna do to protect my mind? Heather?
Feed your mind with good.
Feed your mind with good. Feed your mind with the Word of God. Feed your mind with good influences. Feed your mind with good information that can come through radio. Can come through, yes, even television or media that is good. There's a lot of good media, a lot of good new, a lot of good feeds out there for us, to be able for us to think about. So that's where it's at. Along with, real, you know, as much as I enjoy listening to somebody preach, I enjoy listening to somebody else preach, okay? But as much as I do, real life transformation for me has happened, I would say probably 95% of the time, when I'm reading and studying God's Word myself. That's where real life transformation happens. If I'm not spending time reading and studying God's Word, then I'm going to have a deficit in spiritual change in my life. Oh, I can glean some things, and I'll grab stuff that other guys are saying. You'll see me write stuff or have stuff on PowerPoint that other pastors or preachers say. But in my own life, real transformation comes when I'm in the Word of God, and the Spirit of God speaks to my heart about an issue that I need to change in my life. And that's where I think we need to spend most of our time. When you think through all that we have, make sure that we are maintaining a healthy spiritual life. Don't ever lose sight of your position in Christ and the power of the Spirit of God working in your life to transform you, to be what God wants you to be. Let's try. "Our gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for your Word. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to share with your people this evening. Lord, I pray that you would fill us with a knowledge of your will and spiritual understanding. Make us people of your book. In Jesus' name, amen." All right, we'll come back next week.